Forrest.
I just want to, you know, again, I tried to give you the consolidated figures that we have so far, what was allocated by the council, credits that we've had, what we've spent so far. And at this point in time, you know, once we would settle up with FPG in total, we would have about $26,182 left. Again, out of that, we'll need to come the funds for the interior and the exterior benches. I did order the cigarette waste receptacles. We should have those early next week. We went with a wall-mounted type of cigarette disposal, so we don't have to worry about somebody trying to steal them or toss them out onto the tracks. And I've, right now, gotten two bids back for the interior benches that we discussed a few weeks ago. And I'm meeting tomorrow with another contractor who has sort of expanded on our initial proposal. So, you know, we should move forward with the interior benches, I anticipate, in the next few weeks. The exterior benches, I think we'll just go ahead and order something. You know, I have a couple of things in mind. I just have to call the vendors and get some prices, some final prices.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions regarding this? Alderman, Eugene Wesley?
I have one question. So, John, to get the benches and everything, $26,000 is for... That's what's left of the whole contract after paying everything out, right?
Well, you're correct. The $26,000 is the balance of what was approved for total construction costs.
Right, so there's money in there for benches and everything else?
Correct.
So, we will be... Basically, we may be under budget.
It's possible. We're cutting it close. We tried to run everything a really tight budget on this project this time. We left very little. As a contingency fund, typically on a construction project like this, you'd like to have eight to 10% available for the unforeseen things that come up. We didn't put that aside, and we've been fortunate, you know, working with the contractor and trying to be vigilant over how the monies were spent. You know, we're going to come in real close.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if nothing else for discussion, I would like to make a motion to approve this payment to FPG for the amount of $94,874.2. Is there a second? Although, on the question, Alderman Lewitin?
Yes or no? Are we still holding $16,000 for landscaping?
$5,000.
So, is that from the $94 or plus the $94?
Mr. Forrest.
The landscaping has been installed. The only reason that was recommended at the time that they turned the station over to us, the architect and I spoke, we decided to withhold $5,000 just to be able to verify in the spring that the landscaping that was installed in October is per the approved plan. And we also want to be sure that the irrigation system that was put in place at that time as well is functional per design.
That's very good, because, you know, it's a beautiful station, and you did a fine job, a lot of accolades. And when the weather breaks and we see the spring, how it's going to look in summer will depend on how the grass grows, as the saying goes. So, you're holding a little back till we see what the foliage is, is a good idea.
Okay, yeah, I agree. Thank you, Alderman Lewitin. Anything else on the question? Okay, there's a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Items to be considered at future meetings? The adoption of the 2009 International Code Council Building Code Group. What's our best guess as to, you know, when we're going to see this with respect to the intense committee meetings we're going to see over the next couple of months, John?
I would expect we'll probably keep this till probably late April. We could even let it run into the beginning of May. Again, now that the train station project is sort of winding down, I can devote a little more time to it. John Philander, our chief inspector, has been going through our local amendments. Our plan is to rewrite our local code, building code amendments, take out the obsolete materials, the things that really shouldn't have been in there in the first place. But we're going to revise that, streamline it, and then we'll come to you for that.
Okay, so as far as the zoning ordinance, though, I mean, you know, barring any special meetings that we may have additional to the regular scheduled meetings for the sake of beginning discussion on this before the construction season starts, we're looking to be two months out.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. On that particular question, Alderman Wesley?
I thought, was this the one that we talked about having a meeting on Saturday to kill it all in one day?
That would be the...
Coldly, right?
The UDO, the zoning, the new zoning ordinance.
Why could we not... Do we have any idea when we're going to do that one?
Mr. Manager.
I mean, I'd like to get them both wrapped up at almost about the same time.
And next week's meeting, I'm going to give you some possible options, some alternative dates for you to, perhaps a Saturday, for you to wrap up the UDO. I'll bring that up next week.
Well, I'd like to try wrap both of them up.
Try to do that as well?
Therefore, are we online with the... Huh? No, there's a lot of questions about that. But I'm just saying, because instead of tying up the meetings, I'd rather, you know, do it because he's got a valid point, construction season, and they both combine together.
I'll have some dates for you next week, for you to look at.
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dowthwaite. Another item to be considered at future meetings is the Thorndale Corridor Study being done by the Lakota Group. Would anybody like to request any additions to future meetings? Okay, no, then I will make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you.
We'll be taking a five-minute recess for... The meditator could take a break there. Call Public Works Committee if ordered, but the meditator note that same people are present. Any motion to approve the minutes for Public Works, February 11, 2010? That is my motion.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Report and recommendation, contract award to Sendford Management Construction Inc. in the amount not to exceed $55,782.0. This is for the... As you know, we were looking at a site for a salt dome. That was now taken off the table. So, we went to option two, which is a roof for our other bins over there. So, I will make the motion to approve the contract to them for $55,782, not to exceed. That is my motion. Questions?
Oh, a lot of questions.
I'm Roy Wesley.
You did that two weeks ago, too. Dewey, I got this piece of paper here for $55,000. We got pictures, presentation.
I can simply explain it. Currently, there is a concrete spoil bin behind Public Works facility at 720 North Central that has a concrete flexcore roof, over one-third of it. Our plan is to remove that one-third, put a steel girder along the top, encase it with a one-foot aluminum fascia matched to the same color of the aluminum fascia on the building, and put a fiberglass roof panel across the top of that and span that distance.
What kind of warranty is on this?
You know, what kind of warranty is on the entire structure or just the roof panels themselves?
For $55,000? That's for the panels or is that for the whole thing?
That is for the entire project, steel, roof panels.
So, the warranty on the entire project?
I'd have to break it out for you. I don't have that.
So... Okay.
It's usually 10 to 12 months, normally, on all contracts.
We don't have it.
Well, could you have it at council meeting?
Absolutely. I'll break out each of the products, the warranty on the workmanship, the warranty on the fiberglass roof panels, and the warranty on the aluminum fascia.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to award the contract right now, and we'll add that to the motion that it comes to council with the breakdown on the warranty. The secondary agree?
Yes.
Any other? All in favor? Aye.
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 Oppose? No one opposed. Report and recommendation, pay request number two for United Dynamite Corporation. This was for the streetlights. I'll tell you one thing, this is the quickest I ever seen a project done. For $58,456.80, I will make that motion to pay that.
Second.
There's a second, there's a question. Alderman Newzil, please.
Dave, what's left on this? Are they still hooking up the electric? Because I didn't see those lights were on yet. Is that...
Actually, they just hooked them up either yesterday or this morning, and they're on right now. All that's left is restoration, of course, which they can't do till the weather gets better, and then final check, final testing, testing out the controller and everything, and just final inspection.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda...
Next item on the agenda, to contract extension for Clark Environment Mosquito Company. As you know, in your package, you receive a proposal. I'll make it really short and sweet. I believe the contract was that they were going... Tom, help me out. What's the... It's a two-year... I mean, it's a... What's the contract? Go ahead, John.
Thank you, Alderman Wesley. The contract is a three-year extension on the current contract. The three years being this upcoming year, 2010, 11, would be a 0% increase from the current contract amount. The following year, 11, 12, would be a 0% contract increase, and the third and final year would be a 3% contract increase. In your packet, you have the 2009 annual report under information items, which lists all of the services Clark Mosquito provides for us, and you also have a copy of the contract. Tom Kessler from Clark Mosquito is here this evening to answer any questions that you may have, so I can take any of those, those now, myself or Tom.
I will, I will tell you, I've been very happy with Clark Mosquito's. Every time we had a flooding issue, they have come out and resprayed that whole entire area along the creek. I believe that wasn't a charge, but... Mr. Lewitin?
Did anybody else bid besides Clark for this year?
We did not go out to bid. This is solely brought to you as a contract extension. If you wish to extend Clark's current contract, that's how it's being proposed.
Thank you.
I have a motion on the floor. I... Oh, go ahead. Joe Coles?
Got one question. Are they going to put a tester in the forest preserve on Montclair? Because that's where we found some mosquitoes that bring nile...
For West Nile virus, yes. There'll continue to be a trap located over in that area. We'll continue to have four monitoring stations throughout the city. What we're going to do in 2010 is rotate those. In the packet, you might notice that we have removed two of the traps to change the service over to add additional truck spraying for the city. But we'll continue to have a trap on Montclair as well as additional trap at the wastewater treatment facility as well. That's where the West Nile virus was, I believe, found. A positive mosquito sample was found in 2006.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Tom, I have one other question on the... Yeah, I forgot. So, there is a motion on the floor to award the extension of a contract for $46,440.90. That is my motion. Extend the contract for years. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll redo the motion. I'm sorry. I'll approve the contract for two years, not to exceed $45,088.25 for 2010, 2011, and extending the contract three, for the last third year, not to exceed the total fee of $46,440.90. That is my motion. Did I do this wrong, Mayor? He's got two...
All motions are coming out. A council recommendation to committee to approve.
Well, I'm...
A three-year contract extension at $45,088.25 for years 2010 and 2011, and 3% increase to $46,440.90 for 2012.
That's what I said.
Yeah. But it's a recommendation to approve. The way you phrased it is, "I approve."
Okay, recommendation to approve. Does secondary agree?
Nobody seconded.
I'll second it. I agree.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Tom. As always, make it difficult for me. Next item on the agenda, item number seven, partial payment for Apollo Trans...
Trans.
Trans. I know, not partial payment of, um... That is partial payment. This was a project that had already been started. Have any others, any questions on it for John?
Were we making motion first, or...
I made a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Any questions on that? Go ahead.
John, what's left on this project? I mean, did they get most of the work done before it snowed, or what's the deal here?
Correct. They finished it up concurrently while it was snowing. The project, for the most part, the pipe bursting is complete. The only thing that's left of the contract is restoration. So, that's going to include some fences, some shrubbery, some landscape, and some finalized items to the structures. But for the most part, all the pipe is in the ground, all the service connections are done. Residents are pleased, staff is pleased with the results.
So, all we got is restoration, 50, about $54,000 left over?
Correct.
And we're good with that? Okay. That's all I got.
Any other questions? I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item is report and recommendation, recommendation to pay request number four, partial payment for lamp concrete. They are asking for payment of $14,273.75. I believe this was for the extension that we decided on... Dave, um...
Yeah, this is for the, for the extension of the Wooddale Road alley that runs between Sunnyside and Montrose that was...
Added on.
Broken, yeah, broken out as a separate item, and then...
Okay.
This is their bill for that work.
Is, um, is there, have someone gone out there and looked at that, and there's no problem with that?
Yeah, no problem. We are still keeping the retainage on this and the balance of the job. It hasn't been closed out.
What about the tree that was right butt against the driveway? Did we take that down? Wasn't there a tree right against it?
There was, there was a dead tree out there that Public Works was going to take care of the next time they had a tree removal guy out there, and I don't know if that's been done yet or not. That wasn't part of ALAMP's deal.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion to approve payment, payment amount of $14,773.75.
$273. You said $700.
That is my motion. All in favor?
Second.
All second? There's a second on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Come on, guys.
Aye.
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 Mine, mine's a no. But the motion passes. Okay, let's get down to some really business here now. We are really, um, we have a treatment plant that was brought to us, a proposal that was brought to us, and you guys did see their presentation. We did give two or three months to ask any questions or feel back to the way direction is. I will tell you that there is money available for some grant money available. But in order to tap into the grant money, we would have to pick a plan. So, with that, I would like to really open up this to discussion and try to narrow this down and try to take a decision vote on which plan we decide to go with. Guys have for two months. I believe there was no questions brought back to... You want to take the... Hot seat there, or... I believe the city council did not send any emails or any concerns or direct any questions to our staff on the proposals. So, I assume that whatever proposals we go with, we're happy with. I will turn it over to Mr. John Forrest. John Kramer?
To answer questions based on the treatment plant. We have Mr. Mark Holm from Walter Deuschler and Mr. Ed Coggan from Smith Engineering here, as well as Brad Kittelson, the wastewater supervisor, to answer any questions as far as to come to a selection of the alternative, one of the approved alternatives for the addition to the north wastewater treatment plant. At this time, we can answer any questions. We have the alternatives listed, and we can also put them up on the, on the overhead as well, if need be.
Okay. I'll, I'll start this, send in here. Couple times that someone brought up two options. There was a concern about expanding the south plant, that there was an agreement or a possible agreement with Dewey, Pryor, and a couple of our elected officials down there. Since then, we did find the documents, we did find a plan. I believe the plans where we were requesting was put in front of you today, the maps on the south plant. I did read some of the correspondence that came in. This was back in 2006, this project started, about negotiating expanding south plant, not expanding it, hearsay, there's say. There was a conversation about getting permission to south, expand the south plant. And according to the correspondence, that there was supposed to be some land swap for that property. We were proposing the forest reserve district with five parcels totaling 4.36 acres, but we were only asking for probably three acres to expand our treatment plant in the south plant. Since then, there was a couple of questions that were brought to me about the size of the pipe. Could we filter some of that treatment plant down to the south plant? Is the pipe big enough? Since then, I had had a conversation with Brad Kittelson, which is the man that I would think will know more about that treatment plant than anyone in this council. So, I will turn it over to Brad on our conversation with the pipe. Since then, I understand there was a, Brad went out to the site with John Kramer to look at the site. Let's hear what they think about that. And the other thing I would like you to cover with the conversation we had is about the, the permit that we are at with that site right now. And do you feel that we could up that permit from consideration? So, if I would turn it over to Brad or Mr. Kramer?
I don't know if Brad has the answer as far as, and I will turn it over to him in a moment, you know, what the pipe size and going between north plant and south plant. I think we were looking for some direction as far as the alternatives going, you know, what was presented a month and a half ago. But I can't turn it over to Brad as far as any pointed questions, so...
I think that the thing is, for, we don't have a long debate on this. We need to, I agree, we need to concentrate on that, but we also need to get this on the table to bury this or something here. Because, you know what? If we don't pick here, I'm sure that's going to come up down the line, and we're going to be back for the drawing board. So, that's the reason why I'd like to hear about that. Keep in mind, before he starts, Smith Engineer was not asked in this contract to look for expansion on that treatment plant. They did what they were paid to do on upgrade and expansion on the other treatment plant. So, just keep in mind, all this stuff is coming up now that everyone wants to go this other direction.
Well, as everyone knows, there is a diversion, or a, yeah, diversion line between the north facility and the south facility. It's an 18-inch line that runs down Harvey to Carter, and from Carter is Gravity to Addison Road, and then it heads south on Addison Road through the golf course to South Plant. If the council is thinking of upgrading South Plant, the capacity, the difference from what the north plant is now to the proposed capacity, that 18-inch line would be able to handle that. It would not be able to handle all the flow if north plant was eliminated and south plant was totally rebuilt and was our only treatment plant. Then it would have to be upsized.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Newzil.
Brad, we had a little discussion earlier. Bottom line is, if we go to expanding the south plant, your feeling was it would cost us more because we don't have the tanks there right now, and there might be some extra conveyance to get more flow from other parts of town over there, correct?
There was originally with the discussion I had with the city manager and John, was, in my opinion, or I thought, that they were talking about totally eliminating north plant and redoing south plant. To upgrade both, basically what you'd have to do is if you sent partial flow to south plant, you would end up having to upgrade both plants. South plant would probably be more involved since the tankage there doesn't lend itself to being upgraded. So, basically, you would end up tearing pretty much everything out of south plant and building a new plant there to handle the extra flow you'd send there. And then you would still have a 25-plus-year-old plant on Irving Park that needs some attention, too.
Can I do a follow-up? I'd like to refer to Mr. Coggan. Is what he's saying is correct, that being that that plant does not have the tanks, that if we were to expand the south plant, that the cost would be more?
Yes, it would. The existing process issues at the south plant, it's been there since the early '60s. It works very well for the loads that it's seeing, but it can't handle the, you know, the lower cleanup levels that we have to achieve with our, any plant expansion that's going to come in. I want to pull one slide out from the presentation will help show that. If you all, if you recall the table of the capacities, of the capabilities of the existing versus the, and the alternatives that we're proposing to treat for the different nutrient removals that we need to. IAPA is implementing a new program. It's really a response to something called the New Lennox Decision, where they were sued by a number of environmental groups. Any plant expansion that occurs now... Any plant expansion that occurs now has to, you know, reduce the total amount of discharge of loading that goes to the receiving stream. And one of the things they're doing on it is now this total nitrogen limit is coming up on every time you're doing a plant expansion. The existing processes don't do the total nitrogen. You know, the yellow, it's inadequate quality, it won't meet it. Any of the alternatives that we're proposing are either adequate or high-quality for those extra nutrient removals. The North Plant can be modified, as we presented, to handle the nutrient removal by adding additional tankage to it. South Plant really can't lend itself to be in, modified. So, an entirely new structure would have to be created. There's no benefit from reusing what's there. Has Dad answered that question?
Yes, and can we just clarify something?
Alderman, please.
Uh, Alderman Wesley said that you guys were hired to do the North Plant, but I believe when you guys were hired to do the job, you evaluated both plants and you made your suggestions based on your valuation. That's why you picked the North Plant, is that correct?
Correct. The most cost-effective alternative was to, as we recommended, actually reduce the loading and the rating on the South Plant to get it down below one MGD, so it's no longer a major discharger, a major permit. Uh, they're a little more lenient on your discharge limits when you're below one MGD. And the existing plant can handle, and it's demonstrated over the years, it can handle the one MGD, uh, loading. It's currently loaded actually at about a point eight, point eight-five MGD. And it handles that without a problem. So, we're recommending is let that plant just keep running the way it is. That plant was originally designed as probably about a two MGD, two and a quarter? Just under two. Uh, that type of plant, if it's lightly loaded, operates very well. If you try to operate it at its rated loading capacity, um, they're very tricky to operate. But when you lightly load them, they, they work real well.
Alderman Coles?
Yeah, I was on the first committee when Baxter and Woodman was on that. And the forest preserve said that we were, we're thinking of expanding that, and they said they would give us some land closer to, on Addison Road, close to the expressway and, uh, 'cause they didn't want any trees cut down in, in the, in the forest preserve, in the golf course. So, they didn't want it expanded. Uh, and it's rated at one ninety-five, and we always running about one hu, one hundred, uh, in there. So, uh, they didn't want it... The expansion was just set aside. So, they focused on the, a new plant and the North Plant. And the North Plant, uh, is the one that Smith got. And that, I was on that committee many years ago. That was five or six years ago. All right, so that's why, that's why they, uh, went with the North Plant. That's all I gotta say right now.
Okay, uh, Mayor Johnson?
Um, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is due to all the foreclosures and the factories that have closed and everything, we're operating at nineteen ninety-eight flow levels, levels we haven't seen for the last twelve years?
Well, we're averaging less, I would say. Yeah, we are averaging a little less. Um, probably like around one point four right now. Uh, when we were averaging around one point eight. But it is winter time, too, and our flows do go down during the winter.
That's for both plants, the one point four?
That's just North Plant.
Just North?
Yeah. South Plant's still about point five right now, or half a million gallons. But they are a little less, yes.
If we did what you just started your comments with and use this diversion line and rebalance the two plants, what percentage of capacity would North Plant be at? And what percentage would South Plant be at? If we just didn't do any new plants at all?
They would probably be both just over a million gallons a day.
No, I'm sorry, percentage?
Oh, percentage, um, about half.
So, both plants would only be, both existing plants would only be operating about fifty percent?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, South Plant would be a little higher. South Plant would be about seventy-five percent, North Plant would be about sixty percent.
At current conditions?
Right.
Are you done there?
For the moment.
Alderman Winger?
I'd really like to focus also on, um, current as well as projected. And I, um, our current population, I'm hearing the numbers, how we're operating now. And we've looked at population projections, and it looks like it's based on the CMAP 2030 projections as well as the Thorndale redevelopment. And for the CMAP 2030 projections, what population were they projecting?
See, they were projecting, um, residential population of thirteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine, and employment of twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-three.
So, so that's like the daytime traffic?
Uh, yes, I believe so.
About twenty-nine thousand? And it, and what's our current daytime, do we know?
Uh, 2010, the estimate is twenty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-six.
And is the increase in the three thousand based on the potential Thorndale redevelopment?
Uh, those are just, uh, employment numbers, and I believe they do include, um... Let's see, we do have some capacity accounted for, and I'm sure there's some employment as well as hotel rooms and such that we've accounted for in, um, the Thorndale redevelopment. Um, to kind of break it down quickly for you, the 2030 projected average flow, um, the 2010 average base flow is two point seven-two million gallons per day, MGD. The increase, um, in average flow based on the CMAP projections is another point one-two MGD. The increase in the Thorndale corridor, uh, is point seven-zero MGD for a 2030 average flow of three point five-four MGD. And then we also accounted for additional capacity of twenty-five percent, or point eight-nine MGD.
And, and then as a, thank you, and then as a follow-up, um, we talked about the CMAP 2030 projections. And then when we accounted for the Thorndale redevelopment, the numbers you gave me, the thirteen-five currently is, is what we have, actually. It going to thirteen, eight sixty-nine, uh, and then the twenty-six thousand current going to twenty-nine thousand. Is that what the Thorndale redevelopment would include when we looked at those numbers, too? Or is there additional population that we would need to plan on that?
No, that's correct. That's the, the two numbers that I read before. The thirteen, eight sixty-nine, and the twenty-nine, two seventy-three include the Thorndale redevelopment.
Okay, so, uh, thank you. That, it, just overall, I do have a concern that we would be planning for something that might not happen. And, and I gotta throw it out there, that is a big concern. Oh, look, Wooddale did thirty-million-dollar treatment plant, waiting for something that, there's budget crisis is all over, and, and it might not come. Thank you.
But I'll chime into that. I know it's your concern, I know this is a big price tag. But then why are we approving a code group? Go forward, then.
I, I don't think we should. I, I was looking for it in the first place.
I'm just saying. I'm looking at the future, it's a big project. There's some, there's stuff that's going to be coming down from the state that is going to require us to do something with that treatment plant. And if we don't react to do something with these treatment plants, we are going to start getting fines. I believe, I talked to Brad Kittleson, and, and let's back up here, Brad. We talked about Fazel, I believe we talked about? Right. What, that may be coming down in two years. And what that's going to mean to us is that they may give us a deadline that it must...